Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, August 29, 2023. The clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Okay.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Reverend Burgess Protem.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may be seated. The next order of business is, is there a need to amend the agenda, Kim?
No.
All right, there's no need to amend the agenda. The next order of business is proclamation. There's none to be presented, there's two to be read. Ben Cook?
President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, August 6, 2023, to be Michael Ward's Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Gross presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh joins our sister city of Matanzas Cuva in celebrating 330 years since its founding.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do your second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, they are approved. That takes us to public comment. I'd like to remind everyone, the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller, good to see you this morning.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Zuber, Van Watu, vote by voter verification for whom, and uncensored freedom of speech and public comment are key to what I do. I'm a Global Intelligence Society U.S. candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org, in which we seek optimal information and intelligence to unify city and country using a fusion of the information and intelligence complexes of the 21 primary disciplines of global intelligence as I understand it. Homo intelligens is what we're after, especially via Hausa, Nihongo, Espanol, Deutsch. A concern of this council repeatedly over time through many ordinances and activities is freedom in the land of the free. This is a city in a country that was founded on, in our view, lawless violence. That doesn't mean it wasn't justified, but it was definitely violence. To be free from being trapped by the, by the British in London, 1776 to 1782, but today, 2020 through 2023 to 2024, we the people, I think, feel trapped. The vote, Tarko, U.S. Pittsburgh citizens are trapped by, in our view, the psychological political pathology of being told that his or her vote is legitimate, but that he or she cannot check its legitimacy. Two, the freedom of speech, Wana, citizens are trapped via local government councils across the United States, including this one. Again, our view, psychotically censoring freedom of speech in meeting public comment by not permitting profanity, but castigating profanity definition and example. Three, the information, anti-information trampa, citizens are trapped between the claim to genuineness for online virtual image information regarding individuals and institutions, ground out by artificial intelligent agent genies, and the counterclaims from authentic alternate images and information of actual living human beings. That's where it's grounded. There's a problem. On all of these, all of these, we feel trapped.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi, are you with us? Once. Naomi Mullen, are you with us? It's your turn.
Yes, here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can start.
I honor my husband, who is a true City of Pittsburgh servant up to public from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say, we want a green space, not a building. We have property value and quality of life to protect. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Former mayor Paduto was selected to be a member of a global group of mayors. It is clear that he disgraced himself with initiatives and actions that call into question his loyalty to our city, state, and country. How dare he appoint the board that said the detrimental school building should remain? They didn't care about the property value and quality of life issues that harm Bon Air. This was read at my husband's funeral, written by Italian chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional, and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name, and was always approachable, regardless of rank. If he had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly, but also energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, friend, and neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life, as his obituary so accurately describes. He was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Alexander Simpson. Alexander, are you with us? Alexander Simpson, are you with us? Our last registered speaker is Ikahana Haumakina. Ikahana, are you with us? Alexander Simpson, are you with us? Ikahina Haumakina, are you with us? All right, is there anyone who is in the audience who wants to address City Council? Please step to the podium, start off with your name and neighborhood. You will be given three minutes in which to speak.
Good morning, Council. My name is Rick Nor. I'm from Brookline. Today, I want to talk to you about something that's not really on your agenda, and has been an idea that's been around for about 50 years, and nobody's really talked about it for the past 30. And I had the privilege of working for a great man named Eddie Lewis, who built One Oxford Center, South Hills Village, and Monroeville Mall. And the one thing that was unique about Eddie, not, the reason why he was a brilliant businessman, was because he was able to bring people together and make things happen. Now, I know your options are limited in this regard, but I'm calling for, it's an old idea, a rapid transit system from the airport to downtown and eventually out to Wexford. The reason for this is I think that this will have a huge, obvious boost to the business in the City of Pittsburgh, the county, and the entire region. I can go on for countless reasons, I only have three minutes to talk about it, but if you push the idea with the city elites, the movers and shakers, our local politicians, state, and federal politicians, and it's a lot of money, obviously, but I've been to, I've traveled all over the country and to Europe, and I can tell you that the impact is obvious to anybody that wants to look at it. And I do believe that it's doable. Now, I don't know about the old studies, but we do have a nice corridor that comes from the airport to downtown, in particular, that I think it can be done with the right people behind it. Now, I've seen a lot of big projects go in the city. I've been around a long time. I grew up in the city for 60 years, longer than 60 years, but actually, but this goes back at least 50 years. How many of you remember Sky Bus out at South Park? Went nowhere, okay? Then we had the T Line, went to South Hills Village. It had a great success, but it's limited. If you want to bring in visitors, flight crews, people that can park outside the city and do business in time, and visitors, obviously, then this is the project that we need to be talking about here in Allegheny County in particular, but the City of Pittsburgh. Our city is dying. I can't tell you how it looks different to me from when I was a child in 1960s coming down to Kaufmans and Gimbel's and places like that. So it's, time has come, and I think people need to speak up and talk to the right people. I'm just a peon, I can't do anything about it, but you are in a position to do something. So hopefully, you can promote this idea, go with it, and get the right people together and make it happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there any other speakers before us? Any other speakers before us? All right, now we have, we do have a commenter who just came online. Ikahna Haumakina, are you here? Are you ready to speak? You have to unmute yourself for the last time. Ikahna Haumakina, are you here, ready to speak?
Yes, I am. I'm present. Greetings and good day, everyone. My title is Ikahna Haumakina, the Grand Inca of the Arikha Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I thank you for this opportunity to speak before City Council, to express some of the sentiments of things that have been going on in the city. I must say that my heart is heaven to continuously be the racially motivated violence towards Indigenous people, Brown people, commonly known as Black or African American people. Until we have a very difficult conversation about why except that force always seems to be towards so-called Black and Brown people, then it will continue to happen. We cannot continue to militarize your police force and expect for people not to be injured, harmed, or killed in the process. You must take a close look at the hiring process. We try to weed out those who have no business in the executive branch of government as public servants. We must put back the serving part and the duties and the requirements of police officers. You must also take a good look at how SWAT situations are handled, because I don't understand how someone was murdered in the same, given the same situation where 11 people, 11 lives were taken at the Jewish synagogue in a large building where more places to hide, that he was able to get his day in court. And somehow or another, our Brown brothers and sisters are not given the same opportunity. That to me screams inequity. And so equity must be put back into this process. Our lives must be preserved regardless of how wrong or right someone is. They all deserve their day in court. And so I just want to remind you all of words of Martin Luther King. Injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. And so until this governing body, known as City Council, who has a lot of oversight over the city and how it operates, I implore you to take a closer look at how these situations are playing out in the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you for your time, and may your conscience be penetrated by my word. In laque, ala que in, in the words of our ancestors. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. At the exhaust, our list of speakers will now move on to presentation of papers, starting off with Mr. Coghill for myself.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1844, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 317 of 2021, authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended agreement or agreements with Pervis Systems for installation of a new fire alerting system and related support services by increasing the approved amount by $634,700 for an amended total cost not to exceed $3,398,527.51 over 10 years. Bill 1845, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article 11, Parks and Playgrounds, Chapter 473, Use Regulations, Section 473.01, Park Property, and Title VI, Conduct, Article 11, Weapons, Chapter 695, General Weapons Provisions, Section 695.04, Use of Weapons by Discharge by Adding Exceptions to Allow for the Implementation of a Deer Management Program, and Bill Number 1846, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the United States Department of Agriculture for Services relating to a Cooperative Wildlife Damage Management Program for White Tail Deer for a sum not to exceed $10,251.07.
I'd like to motion to waive Rule 8 for 1845 and 1846.
Do your second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. That takes us next to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Mr. Protem, if I may first, may I give a motion to amend the agenda? I don't, I didn't hear us do that this morning.
We did not. I didn't know it was necessary. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
There is, and I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Okay, so the table is open, you can present whatever it is you want.
Thank you, Mr. Protem.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1841, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License from Mac and Taz, Inc., located at 335 East Main Street, Carnegie, PA, to the applicant Amboi Restaurants of Pittsburgh, LLC, doing business as Amboi Eatery, located at 400 East Ohio Street, pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Bill 1847, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the City of Pittsburgh Department of Public Works Project, Department of Works Project, Lincoln Place Combined Safety Facility, located at Latton Block 184E80, at no cost to the city. Bill 1848, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the University of Pittsburgh Gene and Cell Therapy Project, Lot 18 of Hazelwood Green, PLDP, at no cost to the city. Bill 1849, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 630th Street Project, which will involve the development of one apartment building with associated amenities. The site address is 630th Street and the 6th Ward, at no cost to the city. Bill 1850, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 2929 Smallman Street Project, which will involve the development of one apartment building with associated amenities. The site address is 2929 Smallman Street, 6th Ward, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1866, Ordinance Amending Title VI, Conduct, Article 5, Discrimination, Chapter 659, Unlawful Practices, 659.03, Unlawful Housing Practices, in order to provide protections to homeowners from solicitation and related problems, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 1867, Ordinance Amending Title VI, Conduct, Article 1, Regulated Rights and Actions by Adding a New Chapter Entitled Residential Property Wholesalers to Regulate the Solicitation of Purchases of Rural Property and Require Certain Disclosures of Property Purchasers to Homeowners.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1851, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Calera Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $634,000, an increase of $322,000 from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 1852, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the California Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,020,000, an increase of $220,000 from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1853, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the Critical Sandwalks Improvement Project and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $970,052.77. And Bill Number 1854, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the Second Avenue Connector Project and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $148,295.01.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1855, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Regional Opportunity Center, Doing Business as Vibrant Pittsburgh in the Amount of $50,000 for Annual Membership Dues. Bill Number 1856, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, Effective December 27, 2022 as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 Through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Calera Street Bridge Tip by $322,000 and California Avenue Bridge Tip by $220,000."
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman, Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1842, Ordinance Amending Title VI, Conduct, Article 1, Rights and Actions by Creating a New Chapter 620E, Protection of Gender Affirming Care Services Providers from Out-of-State Investigation or Prosecution for Providing Legal Gender Affirming Care. Bill 1843, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI, Conduct, Article 1, Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter 603, Enforcement Limitations Regarding Bans of Certain Reproductive Healthcare Services by Creating a New Chapter 603A, Enforcement Limitations Regarding Bans of Certain Gender Affirming Healthcare Services. Bill 1857, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Fellowship Participation Agreement and/or Agreements with Coro Pittsburgh at a Cost Not to Exceed $18,000 over 3 Years. And Bill Number 1858, Resolution Amending, Resolution Number 335 of 2022, Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Departments of Innovation and Performance and Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with OST, Inc., as needed to fulfill a number of critical IT and device-related projects related to database management and migration and software development, to replace key systems by increasing the term and authorized not to exceed amount by $180,000 for a total cost not to exceed $426,346.02 for a term of up to 3 years.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wilson.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. And Madam Clerk, if the sponsors are so willing, may I join as co-sponsor on 1842 and 1843 to show my support?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land, Use, and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Now, we have communications and things from Council President Teresa Kelsmith. We'll do these in three different batches. First, the communications.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1839, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb Submitting a Performance Audit of the Department of Public Works Bureau of Environmental Services Recycling Division, dated August 2023. Bill 1840, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb Submitting a Performance Audit of the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Public Safety's Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, dated August 2023. And Bill Number 1859, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Requests on behalf of the Mayor's Office for Audrey Wells, Michelle King, the Department of Innovation and Performance, for James Hobai, the Department of Public Works, for Michael Schmidt, Jared Bodansky, and Ed Cox, per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018.
Need a motion to read, receive, and file.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. All right, we have a motion now, an informing appointment.
Bill 1860, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Pamela Petro Ott as Assistant Director, Employee Compensation in the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Thank you very much. Now, we have, we need, what, a motion to approve?
Re-receive.
It says here approve, but would, which one do we need to do, Madam Clerk?
It's approve.
So a motion to approve? We need a motion to approve.
Not unless you want to interview.
Huh?
Not unless.
Unless you want to interview.
No.
Need a motion.
So a motion to approve.
Do your second.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. We are, they are, appointment is approved. Now, we have four appointments.
Bill 1861, Resolution Amending Resolution 295 of 2023, Appointing Julian McLean as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for an Updated Term to Expire May 9, 2026. Bill 1862, Resolution Amending Resolution 294 of 2023, Appointing Calvin Aster Ecker as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for an Updated Term to Expire May 9, 2026. Bill 1863, Resolution Amending Resolution 293 of 2023, Appointing Catherine Calhoun as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for an Updated Term to Expire May 9, 2026.
as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for an Updated Term to Expire May 9, 2026. And Bill Number 1864, Resolution Amending Resolution 435 of 2023, Appointing Melanie Ngami as a Member of the Planning Commission for an Updated Term to Expire January 1, 2026.
Need a motion either to interview or a motion to approve?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, motion to approve 1861, 62, and 63, please, and a motion to interview on 64.
Let's take them separately. The first three are a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. For the, is 164, I think it is, you said?
Yes, please.
There's a motion to hold for interview. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. The clerk will then schedule for the interview. There is no unfinished business. There are no reports for committee for final actions. I will therefore make, read, read the announcements and then open up to members. Meeting announcements this afternoon, council will hold a briefing with sessions at 1:30 and 2:30 pertaining to upcoming park legislation. Tomorrow, Wednesday, August 30, council will hold the standing committee meeting at 10 a.m. with a very small agenda. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, on Wednesday, August 30, at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2023-165 related to fresh food access as performance point options. Speaker registration will close at 12 noon. While we're on that, I'm not sure if any of the members want to chair this, this public hearing, this, this public hearing.
I'm happy to check my schedule. I don't have it in front of me right now.
If you want to, you can. Just let me know.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And on Thursday, August 31, at 10 a.m., council will hold a cablecast post agenda to discuss PWSA, a significant rate increase in water sewer utilities. Lastly, in reference of the Labor Day holiday, city council will close on Tuesday. Council's regular and standing committee meetings are scheduled for 10 a.m. and 1:30 respectively on Wednesday, September 6, 2023. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. When? So, the clerk has given us information that the appointment that we held, the appointment that we held was actually already interviewed on July 12.
Ah, Madam President, or Madam Clerk, thank you.
Updating, updating her expiration of her appointment.
So I need a motion to reconsider the candidate.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, she's back on the table. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay.
Thank you.
All right, now, with that, there's anything from members, motions and resolutions, anything from the members? If not, I will now entertain a motion to excuse the option. Member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. We are adjourned.